All right, it's seven o'clock, so we're gonna call our meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we will start with some allegations, Dr. Lane.
Oh, this is just quick. I just included some people were, some of our people were appreciative of receiving their contracts this year. And then also I wanted to acknowledge the fact that through the hard work of Dr. Chambers and Matt Norrid, we went to a fully automated system, wait for paper, so everyone is able to utilize electronic signatures. And we'll have those automated. It's kind of a whole workflow system that we're putting into place, so thank you. And you can read those at your leisure.
So that lets us into citizens comments. Keith, did we receive any?
Okay.
So we will move right into the roll call, please.
Jamie Allen.
Here.
Ryan Flynn.
Here.
Chris Perkins.
Here.
Keith Raigeburg.
Here.
Keith Spalzard.
Here.
Casey Spencer.
Here.
Kerry Trossell.
I can get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as I would like.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will move into the superintendent's report.
All right, first up on our agenda is we have Matt and I from Navigate. And we also have our friends from HCK here this evening as well. Give us an update on construction at McGrath and Mark Twain.
All right, well, thank you all for having me also tonight. I think it's Dr. Lane mentioned HCK Architects, the design team for giving you guys an update on McGrath and Mark Twain school projects. So, quick agenda for what we've discussed tonight, McGrath, overall project update, McGrath budget update. Then we'll discuss a little bit about the Mark Twain design construction update and open up for questions. All right, sorry for the small text there, but we'll get through this. So McGrath construction project update. Project is moving along nicely. You know, overall, we are on schedule. Just a quick tidbits on the project itself. Next year wise, we are continuing with snow and brick veneer installation around the building. Coming around the ECC wing and the south elementary wing as well is where they're starting. And they're gonna make their way around that south side, start to see brick going up on the gymnasium exterior here in the next couple of weeks. Shingle slope roofs, they started putting their paper fabric down. The roof on the ECC is weather tight, I mean, it has the vapor barrier on there. So that you'll start to see shingles be installed here in the next couple of weeks. The membrane flat roofing areas, these are the flat roofs. That work started last week. And that work started on the south elementary wing. They're gonna work over towards the main area. The area C, what we call that, over the kind of the admin space. And then also on the exterior, we have some geese going in various areas around the building. Interior wise, now that we're dried in on the ECC side, we will start to drywall and do more of our finish work on the inside. The electrical room is being built out. As I mentioned, M E P I P rough ends are ongoing, overhead, overhead rough, in-wall rough ends. All of our concrete slabs and blockwork are pretty well 100% complete now. There is a little bit of blockwork still left, but it's wrapping up here. Remaining schedule wise, we are, like I said, on target to hit our substantial completion by October 25th. That'll put us a final completion right there at the end of November. And then we'll be able to start moving furniture in and get the school ready. Some photographs of our construction progress. So this is that northeast corner of the building where the main entrance is gonna be. This is on the west side where the ECC entrance will be. You can see our brick veneer. The gray above will be where the ethos is going. Some of those split face block around the entrance. This is the kind of the playground courtyard area, so brick veneer continuing, ethos will start to be going up. Right side where all the yellow duns glass, that's all been waterproofed. And you can kind of see the roof on the left side. There's stacks of roofing material up there. That's where the roof is going in. You might have another shot up here, another slide or two. Yep, there we go. So that's the roofing. That's the insulation and vapor barrier down on the ECC roof. Interior shot, so you can see we're framing. We have overhead electrical and mechanical equipment going in. Sprinkler lines are going in, the in-wall, we've got in-wall plumbing, electrical. All that stuff is going in right now. This is inside the gymnasium, so we have, you know, overhead ductwork going on. The cusible panel backing is what's up on the walls around the sides and on the ceiling. And then just a bunch of material getting ready to go in there, stored in the center of the space. This is just a shot of the electrical room, putting their panels in, got some transformers set. Be looking at starting to pull the electrical feeds into the building in another, probably month, month and a half, before we're completely energized in there. So next is our budget update. So looking good news overall here. What I've kind of shown is our original budget and the projected final cost in each of the categories. So as we can see on the construction cost side, 15.8 million is what we originally had budgeted for construction. We think we're gonna be finishing around that 15.4. Big key there was we had a pretty, you know, healthy contingency of 5% for the project. We managed to, you know, keep a good portion of that contingency. So any of that balance is gonna be, you know, savings to the project that can be then transferred over to, you know, future projects, the Mark Twain project. So that's a, that's a good one there. Moving in, same, same kind of goes under the furniture fixtures, equipment line item. We did have a little bit of savings there. Professional services, pretty, pretty close in line there. Technology is right in line. Misland is advertising, moving costs is the last lineup. So, you know, overall, you can see where we project to come in. One other point here, I don't have a remaining contingency that we are holding. But we are still, you know, holding a healthy contingency of $200,000. That's, that's built into those projected costs. So in case there is more, you know, stuff that comes up, we do still have, you know, some flexibility there. And any savings there would just be additional, you know, savings that roll over to the Mark Twain project. Speaking of Mark Twain, and HCK can, you know, feel free to jump in here at any time. But we are, we've been now how many months into the project for design? But, you know, we have the schematic design.
Currently in design development, so today we spent time with the staff. What we call the user groups going through their spaces, making sure they've got their design items. Understand how they use their space, what they're gonna need in those spaces. We're going back again next Tuesday. So, Dr. Lane, it sounded like they got late notice on that today. We had a great turnout for the late notice, but we told them we were gonna come back next Tuesday, try to digest what we heard today, make those changes, come back, let them react to some more design iterations next week. So they, they understand that we're working with them. We're also trying to get that access to them right now before they scatter for their summer break, you know, going vacations and, you know, we're all scarce for us. So that will allow us to gather that information and then work, continue working through the months of the summer. And then we'll head it hard again when they come back. Did you have anything to add to that?
Something else, they have restarted about, what, two months ago roughly?
Oh, no, schematic design, so yeah, we wrapped up schematic design midway through last month. And yeah, we're working through design. We wrap that up here at the start of June.
I'd like to thank the board members that had the opportunity to take the tour tonight on McGrath too. So we need to do that from time to time. I think it's good for everybody to see what you're getting for your money and understand the complexities of these buildings today. A lot of moving parts, but it's, they all should, should generate some excitement for those in the community, your staff, those that live by it. See what's going on inside the construction. So thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Yeah, so as Brent mentioned, the design development is underway, looking for early June. For our next deliverable, the third deliverable will be the construction documents that we're looking for early September. That will put us in a position to go out to bid in September, targeting an October bid date. As Brent did mention, we started this process, you know, a couple of months ago. We actually accelerated that from the original plan so that we could try to go to market early. The original, original plan was to wait till January. With the way the market is and, you know, all the unknowns with materials and manpower, we made the decision to, you know, pull that back so we can go out to bid in October. That gives us some more flexibility on starting to procure load materials, lock some costs in. And then construction wouldn't start until that following summer when Mark Twain is out. So summer '23 with a, you know, 13, 12, 13 month schedule to be complete, you know, the following summer of '24.
With that flexibility that you guys had in your schedule, we're hoping that it leads to better bid prices when we get that. We also hope it leads to better chances for success for our low bid contractor who gets this work. So they have a little more time to procure in this crazy market that we've got right now. So we're just trying to set up as much success as we can. Thanks for being able to do that with us. We hope it pays off.
So is that an unusually long period of time between bid and project? But you still expect to get people interested even though?
What we found for years is that our better bids happen in January of the start of the year. As contractors look to fill their plates for the year, that by the time February, March came around, they usually have their workload set. So they start bidding at a profit at that point in time. That was to start work in the summer or when the weather broke. What we're finding now is if we can pull back a little bit, we're getting those better prices. And again, that's a lock-in prices, there's uncertainty right now. We don't know what gas prices are being, or some transportation costs. We're hedging our bet here. We're hoping, you know, when we bid McGrath, we were struggling, we knew it was getting crazy. But now we look like we're pretty darn smart when we bid it, and we hate to be bidding it right now. Came out.
And keeping the market, you know, up to speed on when, you know, what to expect too. We're working with, you know, bidders all the time on, you know, different projects. And we're able to talk, you know, keep them in the loop, you know, say, hey, be looking for this, you know, working with those bidders as well. Kind of just feeling out how their workload and backlog is looking like. So we can have a better idea on coverage coming in April. That's the, that's the.
So not unusual, but I think it's necessary in these times.
Right.
Everything's taking you longer than it did. Everybody's realized that at home. These construction sites have a lot of opportunity to not get something in time, which then is a domino effect for other things. And you rely on that going in at a certain time. And I like what Matt said here. The other thing is to drive competition. For you as a purchaser of building services and building goods, the more people we get interested in this, bidding at the right time, getting them there, it's gonna be quite better for you guys buying your construction projects. We can save these dollars.
That'd be great, yes.
Do you just back, and I know one of the committees met with you, but back to kind of the market. We're in inflation and all of that, and the timelines associated with design and going out to bid. So part of this, I assume the groups you're working with, we're going in, we're sharing that, hey, given where the market is, we need to make sure we're being very cognizant of design decisions as that stacks up against budget. Is that, that's part of the conversation we're having?
In my, in our office, our staff understands that we gotta be light on our people. You may want this product, but if it's not available, we need to be able to offer you solutions that meet your needs. They might be a little bit different. So we've gotta be creative in that. And so we're, many times we'll get to the table and they'll say, well, this is no longer ready. Or we can't get this, we gotta change. So we gotta be ready to do that. The key is getting a long-term building that is easy to maintain, is economical, all your utilities down the road. Because this is your one-time job to do it. The key is to do it right.
And that's also, that's also been the focus with the district design committee. Especially in recent meetings, and we're meeting again next Tuesday, I believe. To, and that's part of that is, is we're designing to meet that budget. It's gonna be a great project, but they understand that they're, you know, making some decisions in that group in order to, to meet that budget.
I'll ask Matt a question. So part of that, you know, pulling this thing back, what did you experience? What is Navigate saying for cost escalation for last year?
Well, for the, up to now, I mean, we've, we've seen it fluctuate. I mean, it's crazy. We're previous to the last year or two, and we anticipated there being maybe a 3%, 4%.
A year.
Per year of inflation. I mean, we're seeing it anywhere from 15% to 20% just in the last six months to a year. So I mean, this is like definitely, you know, unprecedented.
We saw last year 4% of core. So since 1930, when they started tracking the construction costs, they ran, they were almost about what the cost of living. About 3% roughly. Year in, year out, it might go up, it might go down, but it averages about 3% a year. Last year we saw 16% escalation in most of the market area. So if we can, you know, if we're gonna have that again, we're cutting off 4% or whatever, that's real money to you on a 0 to $1 million project too. It means us to get to, to get it out.
And kind of talking to, your question too, Keith, just materials, understanding, you know, what materials are hard to get to right now. So we can kind of use that in the process for our design. I think it's even stuff like concrete masonry unit, block is harder to get. So maybe we're just talking about.
We're just standing over here, you know, we're storm sheltering at Mark Twain. We're, you know, every, we were using a lot of masonry. We couldn't get masons. We all jumped over, the designers jumped over the precast, you got precast at McGrath. Guess what? Now we can't get precasts. They're getting busy. So, you know, over at Hancock Place, we're using ICF insulated concrete forms. So is there another option that we will deliver the same thing, give you that hardened shell protective nature that we need? So, and I would say that, you know, in my industry, eventually it'll flow back around to masonry. And it's, you know, we're all just looking for good opportunities here.
I had two questions. This kind of ties to the budget as well. We have, in our current budget for the Mark Twain construction, we have 4.7 million for next year, which seems a little bit high that we probably won't, you know, there might be some pre-buying. I'm wondering what your thoughts are on what, you know, I understand that we're gonna have, you know, professional fees and things like that. But I hate budgeting for the same cost twice over multiple years. Because then it looks like if people just look at the budget, that we spent 20 million on this project. And so I guess, I'm trying to get my head around, you know, do we think we're gonna have 4.7 million in pre-costs? Or is it gonna be more like a million dollars and we should change our budget to maybe get more in line with that? And I'm not asking, you know, like, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm throwing this question out, I don't need an answer. But if you could work with Matt maybe to come up with a better estimate of what the Mark Twain pre-construction costs might run, I'd appreciate it.
What you could do to help, Matt, is maybe give him a draw schedule so that he can start to see, so that he can, you know, plan his investments right and when he needs to have funds sold and when he needs to come to market with them.
Yeah.
We could be smart on that.
I mean, it's not a huge issue. I just, I know if you have a $5 million project and you budget it every year, it looks like at the end of the budget that you've had 15 million budgeted for this project and sometimes.
The only part of that I could answer convincingly is, you might just spend that on the architecture. If we're not building a building, we're all way over budget.
No, and then, you know, I know our game plan right now is to not move into the completed McGrath till the next year. Is that, in your opinion, is there any reason at completion in November that that building would not be ready for students by January?
I would want Andrew to be in on your end, Andrew, Andy, because I don't know what it takes you guys to move in, put wax on the floors, let the teachers get in, put things up on the walls, whatever. What I was mentioning earlier tonight is we've seen some pretty cool things. It could be at winter break, it could be at spring break. We've seen some schools where they've actually had a parade where they've taken the kids, or the students from one school, paraded over to the new school, they've gone in, started to occupy that, then they've gone back and worked. So it depends on what's a good time for you to make that cutoff and move over. And again, when do you bring the Mark Twain students over?
And that's, I'm not trying to move the Mark Twain, I mean, I wouldn't want to move, I wouldn't want to take kids out of that school over there.
But you need to have something brand new.
I hate to have brand new buildings sitting there empty.
And paying utilities on it you're not using.
Yeah, I mean, I also get the, but, you know, there's talking to some parents and talking to some other people. They're wondering why are we not moving in? And, hey, if the parent, if it's a matter of bodies, the parents will go up and they'll help move the classrooms if that's what it takes. And they're all getting new furniture, and from my understanding is everyone's getting new furniture. So furniture doesn't need to be moved.
Yeah, you're just moving the bodies.
And as someone at the school said, if the teachers forget something, they can walk across the parking lot and get it from the other classroom. Not that they want to do that. I'm not saying that they should have to do that. I just that if something gets left behind, a book gets left behind, no one's gonna be in that school for five months. I just wanted to make sure there was no reason if construction's not delayed in your head come January.
I'd like to work with the administration and find out what we can do to start planning that. One thing right now at the storm of spring, this gives us a little lead time. I don't know what we're gonna have. So let's say we get a delay and we don't get it until December. I don't want to put you by.
And that's, that's my biggest concern is that if we start telling people we're gonna move in in January, and then something happens in the summer and we can't hit that, then we've got.
I think in September I can tell you with more certainty where we're gonna be.
It's like, I like everybody to be able to plan, the teachers be able to plan accordingly and stuff like that.
And I want to ask your staff also, how long does realistically take you to get moved in? Set up your furniture, put wax on the floors, put things up on the bulletin boards, you know, whatever we're gonna have for our teaching tools, manipulatives, whatever we're gonna have for the students.
I don't, I'm not trying, I'm late to this. I don't want to, I don't want to change the schedule that had already been set up. But I know that they're starting to, I'm starting to hear it from parents. And I want us as a district to have a really good reason that we are not moving in in January if it's not, you know, it's gonna be ready. I just want us to make sure that we have that.
Yeah, we can, we can continue to dig into that. It's, and I understand this, Keith, but it's a little more complicated than just, you know, the kids walking next door. There's obviously a lot of, a lot of materials and things of that nature that would go with it. And you basically have the winter break to make the majority of it happen. So, yeah, a lot of it would be just kind of looking at, and of course, we can't, as much as we'd like to, we can't use parental labor.
Kind of, right. No, no, I, I said, I, I understand, I mean, we spoke. I understand, I guess I just want to make sure that we're articulating out properly that there's, these could be things that prevent this from happening.
I think it's great.
And there could be, there could be some partial too. That's something I've talked about somewhat, Dr. Noe, in terms of starting to, to move and access the building. We got both buildings there, so I think we could, you know, have a little bit of a hybrid approach there as well. That it wouldn't necessarily be a, have to be a hard line, hey, we can't utilize the building until, you know, X day. So I, I think we can dig into that deeper, so.
I mean, I think the point, right, is at least we're gonna explore options. But it's also early, it's a key point, I agree. Whatever we can do as soon as we know something with some type of certainty, because this is an uncertain thing. We just need to be making sure we're thinking through that and communicating that.
Yeah, I'd say from that same point, yeah, right now we're on target. That's it by the end of the summer, maybe we should really start revisiting. Because I keep brought up, you know, concerns about materials. My biggest concern is getting power in the building. And switch gear right now is a concern we're having across the industry. Getting gear to be able to power up units and get those finishes going. So right now that's planned for the middle of summer, so by the end of summer we should go.
Well, and I just, it's communication. We say this all the time. Like, it's really easy from the outside to say, here it is, it's up there, what the heck is going on? But just us getting out in front, communicating around that.
That's a great point. I'm all for getting in there as soon as we can. I think you guys are gonna love it. But I can't speak for your librarian, who has to move all the library books over, or Andrew's gotta get his staff in there, or, you know, whatever. It's just, I'd like to work with everybody to get that as soon as we can. I'd say by the end of the summer, we ought to have a plan. And then let's keep a backup plan in our hip pocket should something happen. We start communicating.
Matt, are we, I know we had talked about with that, well, is that back out on our website? Can we get that posted or this content out there?
Yeah, I think on our dashboard, that would be post monthly. I show projected total, you know, construction loss.
Yeah, that was on the dashboard.
Okay.
Just a quick clarifying question on the design and the bidding process. It would, you know, you guys have your finger on the pulse with the supply chain and all the challenges that are associated with that. You know, kind of looking forward at six months from now, maybe even a year from now, some of those supply chain things start to get smoothed out a bit from COVID, right? Is, would it be better timing to delay the bidding process to maybe when the supply chain is kind of smoothed out? We'd get more competitive rates as opposed to doing it early, just kind of looking at from both angles, right?
That's the other thing, we've got the lotion. Let's see if we get to October, you know. I mean, what, you know, I think we need to be ready to look at what's going on. If things have completely got a train wreck, we might want to wait until that comes or something.
Okay.
Well, and we could always take it out again.
Right.
It's another option, but.
True.
I think what, and guys, tell me what, you know, we've had some in-depth, that's a great question. And we've had some in-depth conversations about this. And I think basically what, what you guys are hearing in the industry is, is that, yes, this escalation has to slow down at some point. It's just people are gonna stop doing projects. Now, that being said, I don't think anyone that was predicting that it's then going to quickly reduce or even reduce at all. It's just gonna slow down to a more normal inflation. But unfortunately for a while, this seems, I mean, aren't they predicting this is kind of our new normal for a while?
Yeah, that's the, ultimately, you don't really know. But, you know, to your point, I think once we get to October, you know, history has shown, just in some neighboring school districts that have gone out to bid lately recently, that the market is really tight and there's not as many bidders right now that have gone to the point where they had to put it back out to bid. Put projects out to bid. So we have a little bit of time and flexibility in there. We have that, trying to shoot for getting it out early so we can get a head up of some of those costs and manpower. You know, tie it up manpower for the following summer.
Yeah, it's a double edged sword. Do you do it soon or do you do it too late? At the end of the day, we want to get the best, best for.
The other thing we really didn't talk about, that we are, and we all know it, you're, you can't hire people right now. You know, and every industry has, you see a sign on fast food, these contractors, same deal. If they know where they can put their people ahead of time, that's, that's a plus. But they're struggling to find people, warm bodies, basically, to put in these jobs, as we all. basically to run these shops, as we all know.
Yeah.
I don't know how to fix it either.
Yeah, there's, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So thank you very much.
Thanks for the presentation, thanks for the time you shared, I appreciate it.
We appreciate your work, thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right, have a nice night, everyone. Oh, and next up, we just have our monthly mitigation plan review, no recommended changes. We are fully back to our normal practices as a district. We probably were, we recently held graduation with a full auditorium of parents and families, so that was wonderful. We've got a lot of events going on in the district, we had McGrath Field Day last Friday, we've got Mark Twain Field Day this Friday, Middle School Field Day is going to be on the last day of school, so we've got a lot of fun events coming up and we're continuing to have good safety practices though in terms of the results. We currently only have four students in the district that are out now with positive cases and zero staff, and when students have been out, they've generally reported back as being asymptomatic and not been the hospitalizations or anything like that that have been reported to us, so my recommendation is that we can continue our practices as is.
We have a motion to approve the current mitigation plan. Maybe so.
Motion to approve the current mitigation plan.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's approved.
Thank you. Next up, I wanted to add Mr. Kozart, he is one of our new facilities personnel, to allow him to have a P card of, with a $1,500 limit, so that obviously he can buy various things for the facilities department, all of those have to be approved ultimately by Andy Hartnett and then Matt Nord and myself.
I'll try it, I move we approve the issue, the P card for $1,500 with the $1,500 limit for Andrea Kozart.
Second.
Discussion?
Is that daily or monthly?
That's a monthly one.
That's a good question.
Well, no, I mean, if, you know, if he's needing to purchase something, we've just heard that supplies are very costly nowadays, so.
It's true.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved.
All right, next up, we have Mr. Matt Nord to present on our preliminary budget.
Thank you all for the opportunity, I know everybody's excited to talk finance, we talk about twice a year, so hopefully you guys cut me off when I hit my moment. So what I have for our first reading, our first presentation, and this is for Action House, this is our 22, 23 presentation of our budget. We do go through a process of reviewing it again one more time before we do a final presentation for our next meeting in June. Part of what we have and what I'm going to go through pretty quickly is just kind of the summary of what our high notes are or what our estimates are that are included in our budget documentation. This year is going to be a little bit unusual because we are using two CPI numbers, we're using Consumer Price Index set by the state, which is 5%, and then we're also using a food index, which is 7.2. Reason why that's important is the number for our food service costs this next year are estimated to go up by at least 7.2%. So part of that is part of our agreement with our Charles agreement. The 5% CPI has more to do with assess valuation taxing ability, but this is a non-reassessment year that we're getting ready to go onto, so we're really assuming a flat levy for the amount of revenue stream received from the St. Louis County. You see that we are showing, as part of our estimates, we assume 95% collection rate and the amounts that we generate through our revenues on our levies, about $13.1 million for operations, usually approximately a million dollars for capital projects, and then we do have the full phasing of our debt service levy, which will create between 3.2 and 3.3 million dollars, which is enough to satisfy our general obligation debt obligations for our payments. We are assuming a slight increase in Prop C, sales taxes, as everything else continues to increase, people are still purchasing consumables, food, they can't buy cars, but they can buy just about everything else when they have more money typically right now, which is driving sales taxes, which the state of Missouri is estimating to provide us an increase in Prop C funding for next year. We are assuming a slight decrease in our title funding, it's about a $20,000 decrease, which is not really slight. We're basing this on our preliminary allocations, which are based on estimates of last year and years prior, and as our food service free reduced lunch accounts continue to decline as we get free lunches, this is one of the impacts that that causes. Beginning fund balances currently are based on our final budget revision that we issued in the past month, that number will continue to get more, so actually it'll be whenever we get to June 30. Really, we have one more large payment that we're estimating coming in from St. Louis County as they release our protested tax funds, and that typically can swing our budget drastically by 1.3 to 1.5 million dollars. We are, as far as our obligations, our current budget is designed to satisfy our union negotiations agreement for our current proposed salary schedule for both our support staff and our certified staff. We're continuing to meet our funding to provide the same quality of health insurance like dental, vision, long-term disability packages that we've provided in years past. We're continuing to provide those resources to meet our obligations for our three to five-year construction plan and also to look toward completion McGrath and to start the Mark Twain project. As far as our major revenue sources, we discussed Prop C, we've decided, we've discussed assessed valuations, we are, as far as our transfers to our teachers' fund, we typically would transfer 3 to 2 million dollars, we also offset a portion of that with our FIT taxes and our transfer dollars. We are also assuming as the VIC program continues to wind down that we are going to have 59 students next year with a total collection value of 307 million thousand dollars. Are there any questions related to the budget as presented?
I just have a question about the food, so the past couple of years, the federal government has paid for lunches.
Yes.
Is that not happening next year? We haven't heard anything.
As far as we're aware, that program discontinues starting with the summer. So a significant portion of our offset of food costs have been through federal, like we suggested. We have not been receiving a significant amount of collections from our students because they've been receiving free lunches. Also, we typically, a large portion of our substance subsidy oddly comes through our charges for what we call alacard, so if a kid buys a one, I'll buy them through the lunch line. We have not been seeing much of that because if you make the full lunch plan that is free, then a lot of times there's the recommendation to take the full lunch.
I think that would be a good thing to communicate to parents this summer, for sure, that lunches cost money.
Right, and I mean, one of the things is, I know it's probably not always the most exciting conversation, but if you fill out the free and reduced lunch application, a lot of our families don't qualify, but the ones that do still continue to get the free lunches, and also it really helps our title programs, it also helps our state aid, so it's, it helps title and it helps our foundation one way or another.
And we recently sent out a reminder to our community to fill out the free and reduced form, but we'll continue to, we'll continue to do that.
But have we, I mean, I'm terrible about this, I get all these blasts, but have we been, I think this is a big deal where we need to be very clear what will not happen next year, right? Filling out the form is one thing, but communicating that, hey, we are not, this is not going to be offered next year, I think is really, really important.
Probably not, I mean, I just, we were thinking along the same lines, so I just read like three articles while you were talking, sorry. And one of them, they were trying to add it into the stimulus package that they're trying to get put back out, but, and then there's Republican and Democrat working together to try to at least get it extended through September so that people can transition into kind of being away from that, but I will echo what he said about getting the applications filled out even when you don't qualify. It has a huge impact on, just because you don't qualify for the food, maybe your income levels causes to get more funding elsewhere. And the application is actually on Desi's website already for the 22, 23 year, so people could already be filling that out, so. I would, I would venture to guess that we're not going to have free and reduced lunches, free lunches next year, it's going to go back to the old way.
First and foremost, we will not, look, if it changes, we will offer it, but right now, what we're expecting, that, that should be out everywhere, we will not have it. Secondly, hey, we absolutely encourage you, you need to go out and fill out the application.
And it's not us that are no longer offering free lunches, the federal government is no longer paying for the lunches.
It's not, but still the point is, right, it's, it's on us, I mean, we, we should be, our duty is to say, hey, look, we were lucky to have this program through the federal government, it's not available, and we're not, because I, there's articles out there where some districts right now are going ahead and subsidizing, right now we have not talked about doing that, so I think it's important that that's out there.
Hundred percent agree.
Right, and you said we have 59 transfer students next year, is that correct?
So it's, it's an estimated number, so each year we ask for kind of like, has that program continued to phase out, how many students that we're asking to continue, the number could change, but that's our best estimate at this point based on our graduation.
Is this our last, is this the last school year that we are getting any new students?
Mine should be next year.
Two more, two more years.
Yeah, not the year that we're going into, the year after, maybe the final year.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Well, we're down to take, I mean, this year we get, we were supposed to only get two students and they did allow us to take three siblings, so.
Thank you.
So part of, just to come full circle, the conversation on the food service, we've been kind of cautious about some of that communication because we really didn't know until almost the final hour, this not only next year, but also just, just free and reduced lunch for our summer school program. So we are providing snacks to our students during our summer school program, and that is just being part of our cost of providing summer school, but we really just have no idea, so we're being cautious about that without having to retract the communication.
Anything else from Matt on the preliminary budget? Obviously he will come back, so if you have any questions in the meantime as you delve into this, Keith.
I already asked, I asked my question to have it timed down.
Feel free to reach out to myself and Matt on that coming in the next month's meeting.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I couldn't. This, by policy, anytime we get a donation, we ask the board to accept that, this is, comes with no strings attached, it's just from a group website, St. Louis High School Sports dot com, they work in some collaboration with STL Today, even though they're not really under their, totally under their umbrella, but they have gifted our journalism program $1,000, so I recommend that we take that.
Yeah, I would, I move that we accept the $1,000 donation from the St. Louis High School Sports.
Second.
Discussion?
Right, nothing comes without strings attached.
I don't know what they are, you may not find out, but it's very negative thinking.
Was this something that our journalism program kind of applied for, or just it was, do you have any?
I don't know, we've given any details on that, Matt?
So the individual from St. Louis High School actually reached out to myself and just asked, they said that they were, they previously had been involved in public education and were interested in funding it, they knew, they were, they were aware that the educator who's over the program had a previous journalism experience, and they felt that that was something that was valuable to donate.
Awesome.
That's great.
That's great.
Did they, did they gear?
So what's the journalism program going to spend that on?
Whatever they want.
I guess that's my question, is it restricted at all? Do they want it spent on sports or to say just journalism in general, there wasn't like a caveat?
They were specific that the funds would be donated to the Journalism Activity Club.
So as long as it's journalism.
Foundation from its sponsor was to use it for photography equipment, sounded like she had pretty clear, I think the club would be a good need for the program.
That's great.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
Right, thank you. Next, we have Dr. Triphammer and Mrs. Regent to talk to us.
Dr. Chambers.
And Dr. Chambers, who they didn't put on the agenda, who wants to talk about the district, professional development plan, PPP.
I understand Alex is going to hurry up because he's got a hockey game.
Geez, Keith made that.
I even wore the blue stones, huh? We just need the presentation.
Well, I'd already asked if we could have a hard ceiling on 8:30.
20.
8:20, okay. Well, you know, truck pop, puck drop's not going to be until 8:45, I got real lucky that I counted correctly on my.
You almost had to blurt that out.
I thought we needed Alex to stay for close session.
By himself, he's going to run.
Take your time though, Alex. I'm proud.
And that concludes our presentation.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so thanks for letting us talk to you about our professional development plan. As we gathered our committee, and Lori Regent is our chairperson, as we gathered this group, we have a committee that meets several times throughout the year, we kind of realized we were kind of a, we were a ship, we were, we were like in a ship without a boat or something, whatever that phrase is, and we needed to get ourselves organized. And so what we started with was developing a professional development handbook. We looked at, we looked at what Desi requires, we looked at other school districts, we actually looked at what we used to have in the past in Brentwood, and we really spent the course of this school year working with our PD committee to develop a handbook, and it really just kind of guides the work that that committee does. And I think that's about all we need to share on that. It is, it just as a frame of reference, the committee is comprised of membership from all across the district, so we have representatives from early childhood, both elementaries, middle school, high school, and SSD.
So just to be clear, per policy, we don't need a board approval for the handbook, but we always ask that the board approve the plan, so.
And we'll, yeah, and we'll, we'll get there.
So the Professional Development Committee, when we looked at the Desi guidelines, outlined our handbook with the following parts that we figured were very important to include, according to Desi, and one of that is our mission and goals, why do we exist as a professional development committee? What are our goals, what do we want to do? How do we elect our members? How do we communicate our professional development plan and communicate a PD learning to the teachers? What kind of training does the professional development committee need? And then what are the requirements needed for our PD plan that we'll hopefully prove in a little bit? And then also, we will be giving, we had guidelines on a needs assessment, so we needed to survey our staff and what they felt their needs were to grow professionally. And then how do we evaluate our professional development, so the program evaluation? And then also, we included our stipends as our outline with the NTB agreement. And then part of the professional development committee, as by Desi, is to be in charge of the mentoring program. And as we know, mentoring our new teachers to Brentwood is very important because we know that we want to keep quality teachers here in Brentwood, and one way to do that is to provide quality mentoring to them, so that way they feel supported, they know that the resources are there, and that they want to continue to teach in Brentwood. And we are excellent school district and we want to keep excellent staff because of the support that we give them. So the mentoring program, we talked about the mission, how do we select a good mentor for the new hires, and what are the mentor expectations? Those are outlined in our PD handbook, as well as what training does the mentor need? And then a stipend as was outlined by the NTB.
So while the committee was.
So while the committee was bringing together all of these pieces, we also thought it'd be appropriate to take a look at policy and anywhere in district policy that outlines opportunities that the board has allocated for staff to receive professional development. We also included all of those opportunities in the PD handbook, so they're very easy to find. They're readily available for all employees. And then they include the links that employees need to submit forms, request approvals. So this part of the handbook really covers the district policies and practices. There are four main areas that the board, through the policies, that the board supports all staff with professional development needs. First is outlining that every staff member, all, as part of the teacher evaluation system, every staff member creates an annual professional development plan. So an area that they want to grow based on some individual goals. Another area where the district policy outlines opportunities for professional development is for individual staff to request from their building PDC funds to go attend conferences, participate in book studies, attend a webinar. So every building is allocated a certain amount of funds based on the number of staff members, full-time staff members in the building. Those individual staff can then request to utilize those funds, and it goes through an approval process through the PDC reps and the building principal, and then on to the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and ultimately back for late for approval. Next is tuition reimbursement. So part in district policy, there is a partial coverage for approved plans and advanced studies. So any certified professional in the district that wants to extend their learning to a deeper level, they submit a plan of studies with series of courses that they want to take, which could lead them to a certificate or an advanced degree. That proposal is approved in advance. And then as they attend those courses, they submit for partial reimbursement based on council rates to support their ongoing professional learning. And then finally, the certification requirements. So any new teacher in the first four years of teaching, they have an initial teaching certification, and there are some requirements by Desi to obtain an advanced certification, which is good for ninety-nine years. So in part of that, four years, individuals have to attend a beginning teacher assistance program. Many, the unions offer that course, Ed Plus offers that course. It's about a hundred and twenty dollars to attend that course, and instructor gets a certificate. And that is part of three things that they need to do in those first four years. One being the mentor, then this course, ongoing professional development. So that is also part of the handbook. So we just embedded each of these with links, so it's very easy to find. So staff know what the opportunities the board is offering for professional learning. So the communication plan, so how do we, now that we have it all in one place, how do we make sure employees know where to find it, how to access it, how to utilize it? So it will be, after everyone has been, share it with you all first, so you want a good sense of kind of what's in there. And then we will publish it to the website, picking off as we open next year. All the PDC representatives will communicate the details, where this plan is, the PD handbook is located. So all staff can access it at any point and utilize the forms that are linked to the handbook as they need. And then finally, we're moving into kind of more details. In the plan, there is a district PDC calendar, so that PDC committee has consistent things that are occurring every year. So the handbook will not change year to year. The handbook are the ongoing structures, unless of course there's a policy change or something of that nature. The handbook doesn't change, it's the PD plan that changes. So quarterly, the PDC will meet to evaluate how is the plan going. Annually, there's training and the staff needs assessment. So annually, we're asking staff, are they receiving high-quality professional development? Annually, the Board of Education is updated. Every two years, the PDC plan goes to the board, goes to you all for approval. And again, that plan is based on input from staff, as well as the district strategic plan. And then every three years, elections where the PDC reps are conducted. So that allows time for those reps to alternate and kind of onboard inputs while others are going out, so we have a continuous implementation of the plan.
So this is just a little bit of an overview of what we did this year for professional development. We had some overarching goals that the district, why, worked on with all, all staff throughout the school district. So technology training, on-canvas and clever. We did some equity training. And then we have some Desi-required mandated training, like dyslexia and suicide prevention and things like that. And PBL is our project-based learning. Then you can see at the Brentwood Early Childhood, they worked on social, emotional learning. That's what SEL stands for, and the best practices. COVID has really affected our students a lot with social, emotional issues that we might not have seen before. So social, emotional learning right now is very much desired for teachers to know how to best reach our students who might have experienced trauma or whatnot from COVID. So those are some things. You will see social, emotional learning, I think on most of the schools did that as well. BECC worked for quality play spaces for early childhood, as you saw earlier with the new building. They wanted to make sure that they're providing the best play spaces for their children. And you will also see the teacher growth goals. That goes back to the, the individual professional development plan that Dr. Chambers had talked about. We really want our teachers to feel passionate and grow up in their learning. And we want them to find ways to increase their knowledge and their instructional practices. And one way we felt to do that was to give teachers time to develop this goal, work on the goal, research the goal, put it into practice, and then time in the second semester to reflect on how did they, their goal work and what was their learning. So that was part that you see through across the district as well. At the elementary and middle school level, you'll see Leader in Me was a heavy developed, time was devoted to professional development for that. McGrath just started their Leader in Me journey this year. Mark Twain has won a White House school or was earned at White House school, so they continue their journey. And middle school as well is continuing their journey in Leader in Me. Leader in Me is not just a one-year kind of thing. It is a multi-year thing. And through lots of years, you will see great growth for our students to become wonderful leaders and be proactive in their own learning. And you will also see that equity is very important across the board as well. And again, social, emotional learning. And at the elementary level and middle school level, we had some standards-based grading, you know, vertical alignment. The middle school is working towards, going towards a standards-based report card. So they worked a lot on what are our standards and why are we doing standards-based learning? Why is this important? The elementary level, we also, you, the board passed a math curriculum called Math in Focus. So in the spring of the year, we really wanted our teachers at the elementary level to kind of have a little jump start, so they weren't starting the year not knowing anything about the curriculum. So we wanted to give, provide them some professional learning opportunities, so that way they will start in August with a little bit of knowledge and comfortableness with that program. Then the, we gave our staff a needs assessment. So what did our staff tell us that they felt like they needed? What training can we provide to them that they really want to help with their instructional processes, practices to become the best teachers that we want them to be? So elementary and middle school, again, continuing that Leader in Me journey. Elementary really values the professional collaboration, both grade-level band and then across both elementary schools. Time to look at data, to develop great learning plans for our students, to see how are they doing on this assessment? Okay, is there anybody that we're missing, and how can we support them? Social, emotional strategies, again, with the Math in Focus. MTS, S stands for Multi-Tierred Support Systems. So that is how are we making sure that every child is getting the instruction and interventions that they need? So how are we making sure that the students, maybe who have a little bit higher need, are getting supported in the classroom in collaboration with our specialized staff? English Language Arts, there's some programs called Pattern of Power, culturally responsive teaching, those kinds of those with equity work. Middle school, trauma-informed learning, that is under the lens of social, emotional learning and responsive teaching is again equity. The high school really wanted student engagement and social, emotional learning and project-based learning and the equity part. So I was really excited, Dr. Tripper kind of laughed at me, but when you look at the goals of what our staff said that they felt that they needed, they totally aligned with the strategic plan. So.
So our, our district strategic plan has four big buckets: engagement, student achievement, social, emotional learning, and equity. And when we looked at the needs assessment that Lori just talked about, we tried to figure out how can we fit those into some of these buckets? And really, we looked at the, the bottom three: student achievement, social, emotional learning, and equity. A lot of what the staff said they really wanted to work on fit within three of, those three buckets. And it really, it's kind of neat because it's, I feel it's like we're moving, we're moving the ship in the right direction now, that we've had this strategic plan that's kind of been here, and then we've kind of had professional development that kind of worked almost independently, and it didn't make.
I want to say they were like more parallel instead of integrated, but it was more parallel working. They were both doing wonderful things, but it was kind of side by side instead of integrated. So I feel we're moving towards a more integrated approach of professional development.
So I think you have in your, in your packet, you have the proposed professional development plan. And that's, that's really what we're, we're asking for approval tonight on. So if I can open it up. Again, we are really, this is a two-year plan, and it's not going to be specific to the point of, we're going to provide training on September fifteenth from one to three in this little category. This is more kind of big picture, big, you know, kind of the big umbrella of professional development. And it'll give our professional development committee and our reps at each building kind of the guidance they need to make sure that they're providing, we're providing opportunities that fit in these buckets. So the first one is equity. And what we're looking at are providing opportunities to help us with culturally responsive teaching, restorative practices, ELL teaching and intervention strategies, and leaning on our equity committee to kind of see, you know, where, where we need to go based on their work. On student achievement, we're gonna, we have several areas. One is math in focus for our elementary students, or excuse me, our elementary teachers. ELA, we have two, two kind of goals for ELA, one on the pre-K through five-side and one for our secondary schools. And they're, you know, the, the areas of focus are specific to those grade-level bands. We are all in on project-based learning. So I think one of the, the challenges that we talked about at our last meeting was, we feel really good about our staff that have been with us now and have been through the full training. Our challenge will be, as we bring on new staff members, how do we kind of bring them into the fold and not just show them a ten-minute video? Because it's, it's a lot more involved than that. So we know, we know that that's an area that we want to continue to support. On our, in our early childhood side, we want to continue to provide professional development around their overarching philosophy of constructivism and specifically project construct. We're moving standards-based grading, as Lori mentioned, into the middle school. But not only are we moving that into the middle school, but now we've had elementary schools using, or excuse me, standards-based grading for about four to five years. It's actually time that we spend some time reevaluating which standards we're going to assess each quarter. As we've now lived through, every content area has lived through a recycle or, excuse me, a rewriting cycle. So it's time to look at those standards again. And then we also want to make sure we're providing content-specific training for our other areas: PE, health, practical arts. We never want to forget our music teachers, all of those folks. And then as Lori mentioned, we are really committed with our interventionist work, providing top-notch support in multi-system, multi-tiered systems of support, or RTI, or Response to Intervention, whatever, whatever buzzword we want to use. We really want to get clear on coaching up our teachers how to work with kids when they're receiving interventions. And then the final bucket that we kind of fit the needs assessment into was social, emotional learning or social, emotional growth. Leader in Me and all of that training kind of fits in that bucket. We're also looking at doing trauma-informed learning. And really, again, the, the last piece of that's a little bit vague in that our social, emotional learning committee has been really working hard to define what needs to happen. And I think what needs to happen, kind of spoiler alert, is that we're going to be looking at a, a universal K-12 curriculum for SEL. When that goes into place, we're going to have to provide support for our teachers so that they know how to implement a curriculum that, that helps with social, emotional learning. And then the last piece here is not so much the plan, it's just a list of the membership. And that, that is our proposed professional development plan. And we're hoping that any questions are answered.
I do have one thing. I want to definitely recognize those members on our professional development committee, because we were able to work not only to develop our professional development, facilitate the professional development for this year, but we also worked on crafting the handbook. And at this point, and so I, I just want to give like a shout out to our professional development committee, because they were so hard this year.
They did go above and beyond. Typically, with this group, we'd meet three or four times a year for like an hour, and we would just kind of, just see what everybody's up to, and off we go. They actually rolled up their sleeves and did a lot of work, and it was led by Lori Regent. So she's not giving herself enough credit for leading.
Yeah, that's great. That's awesome.
Other questions or anything we can answer on our, do we?
So I think this all makes a lot of sense. Do you, in terms of budget for this?
Yeah.
You guys have worked with Matt, and we have the appropriate budget already in the document we're looking to approve.
Correct. And we, and so not only do we have, so we've, we've parsed out money at each buildings to give them a little more autonomy. It wasn't quite like that. And so this, this had, we built in a process with funds at each building so where buildings can make their own decisions on what is important to them. We also have Title II federal money, not a lot, but we do have some that we use for more district initiatives. I have access to Title IV, which will help us with some of the SEL costs. So yeah, it's not a king's ransom, but it's enough to accomplish what we're proposing here.
So I mean, I don't know, but I can follow with you, Matt. I just, it seems like there is, if we're going to go do this, we need to make sure we have the monies available.
Correct.
So you all feel we're, we're good with that?
The other, other piece, specific to the curriculum, on, on our curriculum and instruction budget, I did bake in a few bucks for Math in Focus, decimals training for our middle school teachers and for our high school teachers. We're doing that as, I hate to say it, but as inexpensive as we can through a lot of Zoom meetings and whatnot, but we've built that in as well. Okay. And I asked, just, I don't know enough about how much particular these would cost, but if I go look at line items with PD, it looks relatively light compared to here. So.
Okay. Yeah, but it's built, it's built in, is the short answer.
Okay.
The only real big-ticket item is, for instance, like the Leader in Me. We already have that all cooked in.
Okay, okay.
We, we did a tracking of teachers that were utilizing funds this year. So when the budget was created, there was an alignment with what is the reality of the cost that we're, that we're looking at. So we had a good projection.
And, and some of the things that we're looking to do next year and beyond is use our in-house experts. So we have so many qualified teachers, so let's let them lead other teachers in their area. So let's build our in-house and throw in-house, so that saves on cost to your professional development.
So I, I'm just kind of curious, how do we measure our results as we move forward? Are there specific goals in each, each area for the students? Are we expecting the students to have a certain level of success? How does this all tie back to the student, I guess is what I'm really trying to get to?
I can probably speak a little to that. So as part of the strategic planning, you saw the, you know, the, the four committees. So every staff member, every teacher will serve on one of those committees. And then at their first meeting, they're going to develop their SMART goals and their action steps. And then we have a champion of each of those committees. And then the champion reports back out, and we'll track that on the dashboard and so forth, and tell us the progress towards those.
Okay. I move that we approve the PD plan. And is this for the next two years? Is that correct?
Two-year plan.
Two-year plan as outlined and discussed.
Second.
Discussion?
Appreciate all the time. Appreciate all the time and effort.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I was going to say, too. This was a lot.
Really appreciate.
You've set us up for success here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you all. Good work. Last item that I have is, as we do yearly, approving our staff calendars. No major changes to that, just adjusting to the district calendar and required days off and so forth.
I move that we approve the district calendars as outlined.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those are all approved.
That concludes the superintendent.
Hey, I'm Nancy, Secretary of the Board of Education. Keith, any MSBA delegate report?
Uh, nothing much other than the, that's mentioned down there, the Igniting Great Ideas Summit. It's in St. Charles, you know, next month. I think Kate, by the, by the way, I just got my email saying I was, I didn't register. You can ask me about it. I'll forward it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing much else.
Um, at our last board meeting, we talked about our board committees and possibly reorganizing some people on different committees if they had desire to learn about, we've got three: communications, curriculum, and financing facilities. I know Carrie's not here, but she's voiced some interest in being on the curriculum committee moving forward. Are there other, and Ryan will, whatever you're feeling?
Yeah, I think she mentioned communications.
Okay.
I'd be interested in doing that.
Okay, great. And then, did anyone else want to change where they were at this point? Okay, so I think for our committees, Kate, well, the finance facilities will stay. Jamie, Keith, Lester, and I. Curriculum will be Keith Ravenberg and Carrie. And then communications will be Chris and Ryan. Great. Thank you. And I don't believe there are any committee updates at this point. Okay, great. We also have board retreats, so this is an opportunity for us to kind of at least start thinking about when we would like to get together some point this summer for a, a day-long retreat with the board and Dr. Lane. I think in the past, you've done that about mid-August, before school has started. We can, we can finalize a date, maybe next month, if you look at your calendars, or we could have some emails sent around. I know people have, times are already going to be gone, so.
Did we do that on Saturday last year?
I believe, we have done it on Saturday.
We've done it on Saturday. We did it on Friday.
Have you done it Friday?
I don't know, we've been flexible, just with Travis Gipps.
Been a matter of me.
Here around.
I think we needed about what?
Probably four hours.
About four.
We met in the morning and we kind of worked in lunch and then ended it out. So I guess right now, do we have preferences for weekends versus a work day? Is there some flexibility around that for?
I have to look, I don't know.
This is the hard, the dangerous hard part.
I have three days scheduled in August already, but that's it right now, so.
Do we, like, didn't we do a, like a doodle poll or something like that, that I thought worked pretty well?
We may have.
That sounds right. Sounds like you want to start that up.
I'll start it up.
Okay.
Around my days. I'll put a range of hits on there.
All right, Jamie's in charge of helping us.
I will take, I will get a poll out and just, we can see where we can land it.
That'd be great.
But we, four-hour window, about?
Yeah, four, five hours.
Okay.
I think we'd be good.
I'll send something out.
Yeah. It's nine to two, maybe, if we get out early, that's bonus.
Bonus.
All right, and then some upcoming events. Right here, we have the, the professional learning committee, that's the St. Louis School Boards around the county. It's great, I'm out of town, so I won't be able to go, but if anyone is interested in hearing about what other school boards are working on, they often have a presentation and some breakout opportunities, and it's a good, it's a good networking. It's a nice group of people that are talking about some important topics, and I would recommend it. Yeah, and then Keith mentioned the Igniting Great Ideas Summit, if anyone wants to go, to let Kate know. And we just have our board policy at that meeting. We typically take July off if we can, so. Yeah. Oh, and then we've got their annual conference already here for Kansas City in November, so think about that. I'm sure we don't need to let you know quite yet.
No, it's not anymore, it's not.
Right, right.
That's true.
All right.
I move that we adjourn and move into closed session for the reasons stated in the agenda.
Second.
We can have our whole call, please. Jamie Allen.
Yes.
Brian Floyd.
Yes.
Chris Perkins.
Yes.
Keith Ravenberg.
Yes.
Keith Slosser.
Yes.
Lucy Spencer.
Yes.
Carrie Trump. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.